Okay. I think I am ready to go here.
All right, well, good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, July 14, 2020, Urbandale City Council Meeting, and I ask, um, I'd like to take a roll call, please.
Blake?
Yeah.
Carberry Montgomery?
Here.
Obra?
Here.
Poggy?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, if you please, uh, stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Urbandale's a national leader in character counts endeavoring at all times to memote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in respectful manner consistent with these principles. Uh, item two is to prove the agenda, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
I have a motion by Blake, second by Carberry Montgomery.
Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
Nicole, I was fast finger, I should be an A.
And Russell, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item three, citizens' forum, this is the opportunity to address the council on something not a part of tonight's regular agenda, and I know that Jane Robinett had, um, expressed an interest in speaking, so Jane, if you're on the line, I will recognize you now.
Thank you. Um, my name's Jane Robinett, I live at forty-three oh two hundred and thirty-first Circle. I attended last month's listening session on race and diversity via livestream and was moved by the stories I heard, and I just want to support and encourage the city of Urbandale to keep moving forward and addressing these issues. My hope is that you will form a task force or committee to keep listening and to consider the impact of racism and bias in all city systems and policies, from employment to policing, housing, board and commission appointments, human services, education, and more. I urge you to seek out the voices that may not feel comfortable talking in a public hearing but have a lot to say. I also recommend the One Economy Blueprint for Action in Pope County as a helpful resource in identifying issues and strategies and as a model for measurable goal setting. Even the community as a whole could be presented opportunities to engage in these conversations, maybe like an adjunct to Urbandale Reads with a series of books on anti-racism. As you have said, the listening session was just the first step. Whatever next steps you decide on, recognizing the difficulties of getting organized during this time, I encourage you to act as quickly as possible so we don't lose momentum. We don't face these issues now, they surely will continue to fester and harm members of our community. Thank you for listening.
Jane, thank you, and, uh, as we, you know, we spoke earlier, I said that this is the, is this the start, and we will certainly keep, uh, moving forward on that, but thank you for your comments. Uh, is there anyone else, uh, did you have anyone else, Nicole, that had registered with you before the meeting?
I did not. Um, I will unmute our call-in users for you.
Okay. So at this point, if you're, we're unmuted, uh, if there's anybody that's joined us, um, by telephone or otherwise had not, uh, requested to speak earlier, I will recognize you now, if you please state your name and address. All right, hearing none, then we will move forward. Uh, item four, uh, is the option of the minutes, first, item four point one for the city council minutes of June 30, 2020, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
I have a motion by Poggy. Second by Carberry Montgomery.
Discussion, please vote.
I'm an A.
Thank you. Russell? I think I had you muted, uh, Russell?
Is that an I, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that passes, thank you. Item five is the consent agenda, uh, we have items, uh, one through eleven for approval. Ask for a motion in a second.
A motion by Blake. Second by Poggy.
Discussion, please vote.
Can you change mine to an I?
Yes, and Russell?
Dave?
Dave? Yes.
All right, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
That passes, thank you. Item six, public hearings, uh, we have one public hearing, and that is, uh, should be considered the bids for the community entrance signing, the public notice for this was published in the June twenty-six, 2020 Des Moines Register, and I'll ask if there are any objections to that notice as published?
There were none.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing? I'll ask for a motion in a second.
The motion by Blake. Uh, second by Carberry Montgomery.
Discussion, please vote.
Can you move mine over to an I?
Yes, and Russell?
Thank you. Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
That passes, thank you. So introduce the items, our city engineer, Dave McKay. Dave, I'll turn it over to you.
Give me just a moment, Dave, and I'll give you access to share your screen. Dave, I went ahead and unmuted your line, um, right now, we've got your calendar.
Yeah, and I am. Can you back up, so, one second? Okay.
Looks good.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, this is a community entrance signs, uh, project, and we received bids on July eighth, eighth for this project last Wednesday. We received four bids, and the low bid was from... Low bid was from Pillar Inc., Huxley, Iowa. Their bid was in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, and no sense. Low bid was about eighteen thousand, under the, uh, engineer's estimate, or about eleven point nine percent, and this work, uh, is to be completed between now and May first of 2021, so next spring. Um, a little bit about this project, uh, we initially started out with, uh, putting the community entrance signs at three locations. It was eighty-sixth and Hickman, one hundredth and Hickman, and a hundred and fifty-sixth Street, and the South Corporate Line. Uh, we, on the, uh, sign that was at, um, eighty-sixth and Hickman, um, we had to get an easement from the property in that corner, and that was AMC Theaters, and if anyone's followed that, um, they're in bankruptcy, and to find someone to talk to you between COVID and bankruptcy wasn't a good combination, so we eventually decided just to drop that monument sign out for the time being until we get the easement worked out. Uh, the next one is a hundredth and, uh, Hickman, and so this monument is, uh, showing right here, and, um, it is in the northeast corner of the intersection. Uh, the monument is about twenty feet, seven inches tall, so a lot taller than it looks in this picture right here. It's composed of cast stone, brick, and then stainless steel here, and if we can go to the next slide, here's a, uh, mock-up of what it would look like in the evenings. Uh, it is lit, it has a Urbandale on both, so you can see the Urbandale from both directions, and so that is lit, and then also there is a thin blue line that is above the, the Urbandale itself, and so that's what you have, um, at one hundred, and that was... Next location is a hundred and fifty-sixth Street, this is a hundred and fifty-sixth Street looking north at our South Corporate Line, uh, the street you see just beyond is Maple, and, uh, this is kind of a downsized version, uh, due to the setting, and this is all sitting within the city right-of-way, and, uh, it is, uh, between seven and eight feet tall, again, same materials are being used, it is lit, there is Urbandale right here, and that is lit lighting from north end. Uh, another thing to mention is that this is landscaping all the way around, so there'll be a barrier, and then landscaping, uh, around the sign. With that, that's basically, um, all I have on this project, if you have any questions, I'd really glad to answer them.
All right, thank you, Dave. Any questions from the council for Dave first?
Hi, Dave, it's Bridget. I was just wondering on the, uh, one on a hundred and fifty-sixth Street, if you've been, I know you said it's in city right-of-way, but if you've been in contact with the adjacent property owner?
Um, yes, we've sent them this mock-up and a letter explaining what's happening, that there's no assessment to them. Uh, it's also sitting in a fairly good place compared to their house in that it's, uh, it's even with the blank wall in their house, and so I, 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 they didn't seem to have any problems because they never had called on multiple letters.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you'd contacted them, but if you haven't, and they haven't come back to you, then I assume that means they have no problem with it.
Yep, I believe so.
Hey, Dave, this is Adam, and a couple of questions on this signs is, these are two signs of how many that we kind of have master planned potentially out?
Well, the master plan, um, we went through a map of the city and basically looked at every major entryway into the city. Um, we also prioritized which ones were the most important to us. Um, if you look back at the master plan, um, I can't tell you, maybe I can flip to it right away, we'll see here. Just had it open about two seconds ago, looking at it, um... The total cost of all of the signs was about three million dollars. I don't think probably the intent is to do every location, or if you did every location, it would be way off in the future. Um, so, right now, in the near future, what we had planned, uh, next is consider going after eighty-sixth and Hickman still, but then we're doing the one-hundred Street Interchange and the Meredith Interchange, uh, were the next, uh, the next project that we would be looking at here, so I can't tell you the total number, but, um, you know, there was a lot of them. That's not saying we have to do every single location.
And then the other question, I guess, is on, in the master plan, I saw kind of, uh, you know, it's great sketches of building them, but I never saw, oh, why we need signage to say you're in Urbandale. Do you remember any discussions about why beyond, uh, the only answer I've gotten so far is that it was a council-driven thing, so I don't know if you had any answer on that?
It was a council-driven item to put into the CIP, and the main thing was, uh, basically identity building, um, that the, the west suburbs can be kind of a blob where you never know quite where you're at, what city you're in, and so this would be a way to mark, uh, mark the Urbandale boundaries, let people know they're in Urbandale. Currently, we have like, uh, twelve-by-eighteen metal blanks that welcome you to Urbandale, um, not very attractive, um, and not very effective because of the size.
This is, this is mad, I'll just kind of, uh, piggyback off Adam a little bit. Um, just out curi-, I mean, this, this, again, I wasn't here when they put this into place, it just seems like a very, very expensive sign. Um, is there any, like, is there, have we, have we assessed whether there is a more economical solution than monument signs?
Um, I can't, I can't really say that, I'm, I'm trying to think what would be less expensive than a monument signs. Monument signs over the years have been the only thing that Urbandale really has allowed, and so to go down to a metal blank sign or something else, um, probably wasn't talked about in great detail.
You know, as a-
Go ahead, Ron.
As a member of the, of the council at the time this was adopted, it was a feeling of the council that we needed to identify our borders because we don't have clearly defined borders in Urbandale at all, and once that decision was made, then it was a decision we didn't want just a metal sign, we wanted something, uh, more elaborate, um, and I agree with Dave, I don't, I don't think the council anticipated putting them at every single street that comes into Des Moines, or into Urbandale, but, you know, right now they're at the main streets, for example, the, you know, I've got a lot of positive comments about the ones that have just been finished up by the interstate. Um, I think that a lot of people like them, and, and, you know, that's kind of the purpose, is to give it some character rather than just identify you're, you're now in Urbandale.
One thing I'll note, too-
For every comment you got, I got five or six negative comments when we were door-knocking, so, um, had a lot of negative comments about why we spent the amount of money we did on the Douglas ones.
One thing to note here, too, is that, um, um, Shit Henry designed the Douglas Avenue , uh, beautification project, and also the monuments at the bridge, um, and I think, uh, what Confluence with this project did was, uh, did a good tie in, tying everything together. They aren't the same, but they're very similar in materials and, and look and such, and so I think that it's kind of trying to create a theme throughout, you know, to push Urbandale forward. Um, Douglas Interchange, I would say, I got a lot of negative comments, too, but most of it was related. I think if we would have had good landscaping intact immediately, uh, three-quarters of the calls would have gone away. Um, it was a matter of, we put these beautiful monuments in, and it looks bad because of the bad landscaping, and it's landscaping slowly starting to turn the corner and, uh, improve out there, and this year, we've got a lot of positive, um, feedback on the monument signs, and I think the artwork helped a lot out there, too.
Uh, this is, Bridget, I would agree with what Dave just said. The comments that I got last year were, you know, why are we watering the weeds, they, uh, if you synthesize most of the comments down, and I think this year, um, we're doing a much better... And it looks, uh, you know, ten times better. Um, I think that, um, you know, the, the price tag is shocking to some of you, but I think we're spreading this out over a number of years, and I thi-, I just think it's because our boundaries are so, um, disjointed, I mean, there's, uh, two or three, uh, Raygun t-shirts just about our boundaries, um, that it's important that we, um, we do this placemaking, um, wayfinding, so that people know, um, they're in Urbandale as a, you know, somebody who lives two blocks from Clive and five blocks from Waquis, um, I like, um, people to know, um, that they're entering Urbandale, especially, um, I'm excited to see the one on a hundred and fifty-sixth Street because that is such a, um, heavily-used entrance to Urbandale out here in Dallas County.
Dave, this is Dave Russell. Refresh my memory, when we were discussing these community entrance signs on council a couple of years ago, and I recall looking at some of the, uh, designs, I don't recall that we actually landed on any particular design, and then my second part of the question is, I don't recall that there was a discussion or information presented to the council as to the cost that was anticipated to be spent on these monument signs. Can you help us out here? In the master plan, what were we discussing? Spending three and four hundred thousand dollars a year until we got to two or three million dollars?
Yes, um, okay, so go back to the first thing, that, um, there was a council per push, and I think we all know who the main push was, Mike Carver for this, he was a real champion of documenting our borders, and, uh, so, to, that got put into the CIP, and so then, once we had that money, I felt that really the next thing that needed to happen was to do a master plan, to, well, what are these signs going to look like? Um, and we hired Confluence to do the study, and in, um, it would have been probably in January of two thousand and nineteen, the master plan was completed and was presented to the council at a lunch and learn, and in that, um, all of the cost, well, first of all, the maps of the city where the possibilities to put these signs, uh, were listed, and then they went out and, uh, researched each site and determined what size of site, uh, or sign that could be put there, and then, um, in the end, it was put into tabular form where the type of sign, the number of total of that type of sign, and then the total cost, and then they did a short presentation or a short, uh, review of what would be done over the next few years. For instance, the signs we're looking at right now, I believe in the, uh, master plan, are, the costs that we're looking at here are substantially under what was in the master plan. I think, uh, for these two signs were about a hundred and thirty-four thousand, it was fifty and one fifty, and so it would have been two hundred thousand if we would have used the master plan numbers. When they did design, they were able to reduce that down to one fifty, and then the bids came in at one thirty-five, so we are paying quite a bit less than we had that was in the master plan, so I think it was brought through, all the costs were in the master plan, it was talked about at the lunch and learn, and, um, but again, it was a year and a half ago at this point.
Okay, I mean, I simply do not recall these kinds of numbers to, uh, put these signs in.
And then the final approval, or I shouldn't say approval, I would should say acceptance happened in the February two thousand and nineteen meeting. The other thing to consider here, too, is, one is the, this project, second is, we are right now trying to put together a engineering cer-, or architectural services agreement for designing, uh, one hundredth Street and Meredith Drive, uh, and that is a little bit different, and that's TIF money that we're using to build those signs, but, um, if there is some hesitation here, that probably should, um, kill that effort for the time being.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've had these, we had our master plan, we've had them in the CIP, I think, and we've gotten to this point, and, you know, I, I agree with Bridget's comments, I think they're very important for wayfinding in our city, and I think we've made that determination, I would hope that we would carry that through, but, we are, uh, we are in public hearing, uh, so I'm gonna open it to any comments from the public at this point. Um, and John, I know you, uh, you just posted, uh, something in the chat box about this, uh, appreciate that. Did you, uh, is there anyone that would want to say anything orally for the, for the record tonight? Nicole, I'll allow you to, or ask you, if you want to open up the lines?
You opened up those that were just on a call-in, if you'd like to speak.
Is there anyone like to comment on this item tonight? Okay, hearing none, then I would ask to, for a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
I have a motion by Blake. And a second by Carberry Montgomery to close the public hearing.
Okay. Further discussion? Not, please vote?
Russell, yes.
Thank you. Um, give me just a moment, I need to take back the control of the screen here. I did get five I's on that.
All right, that passes, thank you. All right, we have, uh, then three resolutions for consideration, ask for a motion in a second on the first one, if there is.
The motion by Poggy, second by Carberry Montgomery to approve Resolution one forty-five twenty twenty.
Any further discussion? Not, please vote?
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Ask for motion in a second on the next resolution.
A motion by Poggy. Second by Carberry Montgomery to approve resolution 146 2020.
Okay, discussion? Please vote.
Yes, on this end.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That passes. Ask for motion in a second on the last resolution.
A motion by Poggy. Second by Carberry Montgomery to approve resolution 146 2020.
Okay, discussion? Please vote.
Yes, on this end.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That passes. Ask for motion in a second on the last resolution.
A motion by Poggy. And second by Carberry Montgomery to approve resolution 147 2020.
Okay, discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you.
And Bob, before we move on from this, I just want you to clarify that my support for these signs this year is not necessarily an indication of future support. I think these signs are expensive. I think that we should be taking a look at where these signs need to be located and the amount of money that we pay for them. I understand there's a certain amount of uniformity that once we start with a certain look, but I would hope that we could come up with some other alternative that we're not spending the kind of money that we just spent to build these signs. So I certainly will be looking at it next year if this matter comes before the council then.
Well, okay, to Dave's point, then, maybe we need to have some follow-up discussion on this because, I mean, to Dave McKay's point, as far as that is concerned, if that's the case, then maybe we need to ask some further discussions. We're not, if there's not adequate support for this in the future, that we're not spending time and effort on design and not having these ultimately pass.
If I could say, if I could say one thing, the next two that I was proposing to have designed are high priority areas, the 100th Street interchange and the Meredith Drive interchange. Two of our kind of grand jewels right now. Could we go through those two and then step back and take a look at future, future signs, whether we can scale them back at that point? I don't think we're going to be able to scale too much back at the interchange just because of the mass that's going to be needed for them to be, have an impact there. And so I guess that's one thought I would have is, and plus that that is TIF money also, which I know is still money, but.
And I think it's important that we have good signage at that interchange. I mean, we spent a lot of years and a lot of money to get the interchange there. I think we need to, you know, I think signage is, an appropriate signage is something we need to do there, so.
I would concur with the mayor. There's plenty of ways you could say this, but I mean, I think we'd be cutting off our nose to spite our face with the amount of money and time invested in the urban loop to then not put signage up there would be just a massive waste of all of that for people not to know that it's an Urbandale project and that they're in Urbandale now.
I certainly concur, especially with those two projects. I just think it's something that we need to have done. And we'll try to get the landscape to get done closer to the time that the monuments are done.
Do you have an estimated cost for what those interchange signs would look like? Or what they would, what they would cost?
Yes, we have a real good idea. They did backups for 100th Street. And if you're familiar, up there on the north side and the south side of the ramps, there are two very large islands because of the number of turn lanes that are involved in the center portion of the bridge. If there would be, one's very similar to 100th and Hickman, if you remember the lighted version I showed you, that's very similar to what we'd have in the center medians on both sides of the interstate. Estimating from the bids we received here, you're probably talking about $100,000 per sign for those locations. And that includes, you know, getting power and everything to those locations for the lighting and such. Meredith Drive isn't really quite as far as long as in design right now, so it's a little bit, a little bit gray. So I would just throw out a ballpark, it's probably going to be two signs at each location and each about $100,000.
Now, would that include landscaping, irrigation?
It includes landscaping, not irrigation. And landscaping being around the sign, we basically are boxing the sign, getting mowers away from the signs and putting some color at the base of the sign.
But not the extensive type of plantings that you have out on Douglas?
No. Again, that, that project was a $750,000 project that ran from 109th all the way to, you know, the pilot truck stop. So that was considerably larger project than what we're talking about here.
Okay.
And then at that point, we could step back and say, you know, where do we go from here?
All right. Any further comments from anyone before we move on? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item seven, establish public hearings. We have one item, 7.1, to establish the public hearing for the fireworks amendment for July 28, 2020. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
The motion by Obrak. Second by Poggy.
Discussion?
Russell, yes.
I'm supposed to be an A, yes.
Thank you.
This is Bridget. I'd just like to, I appreciate for the very quick work on behalf of the city manager's office and the city attorney, making this amendment turned around and on our agenda.
All right, that passed. So moving on then to item eight, first, we have four planning and zoning items. And first is item 8.1, the Goodman Estates Plat 1, preliminary plat at 4701 72nd Street to 4705 74th Street. And introducing this is our chief planner, Kristi Bales. Kristi?
I just pass the presenter privileges over to hers. Give her just a moment here. Very good, thank you. The first of the four items from planning and zoning tonight is a preliminary plat for Goodman Estates. This is an infill development to give you a location. 72nd is on the east side. This is Goodman Drive, and then 74th Street is here on the west. The two properties were purchased and are proposed to be subdivided into eight properties.
I don't have anything on my screen. Is that the only one?
Hang on a second. Nope, you are correct. Give me just a moment here.
I see the cursor moving along a black screen.
Did I do it right? Very good. Sorry about that. I'll throw it over briefly. Goodman Estates preliminary plat, 72nd Street on the east side, Goodman Drive on the south, 74th is here on the left side. The developer is looking to subdivide the little over three acres into eight buildable lots, shown here on the screen, with seven of them fronting onto Goodman and then one around the corner on 74th. They will essentially line up very closely to what's across the street. The property was owned earlier this year to R1S, which is our suburban density, single family district. The minimum requirement for lot width is 70 feet, although these are mostly 80-foot wide lots, so they exceed that requirement. They'll have a 30-foot setback on the front, in the rear yard, and eight foot on the side with a little bit wider along the street as required by our code. This will be on the Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow. They're going to do that voluntary payment in lieu of park infrastructure. There isn't an adjoining park or infrastructure that that payment would be contributed to. So we'll use it for other parks here on the east side of the interstate. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. There will be some demolition work done, so there's some comments related to that and some paperwork that we'll need. There are some changes just to the plat itself, and then some drainage report calculations that we'll need as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval last week unanimously, seven to zero. And I'll take any questions you may have, and then turn it over to anybody who wants to speak.
All right, thank you, Kristi. Any questions for Kristi from the council? All right, if there aren't any questions, we have a motion in a second.
I have a motion by Blake, second by Poggy.
Okay, further discussion? Please vote.
Yes, Nicole.
Thank you.
That passes. Thank you. Item 8.2 is the Casey's General Store site plan for 4580 114th Street.
And pass the baton back to Kristi here. Give you just a moment.
The next case in front of you is the site plan for a new Casey's general store here at 114th and Meredith. Meredith along the north, 114th here along the east side. You can see the construction just starting for that ramp work, which has certainly come along a lot farther than, than, in today than when the aerial photos were taken. The proposed Casey store is a little over 4,100 square feet in size, one-story building. It'll essentially have frontage on, you know, those three streets. And so the property zone CH, that highway commercial district, it had conditions of the rezoning, one of them being that the building materials be predominantly brick. So flash over to this for a second. That's their building elevation they submitted with the project and how that is planned to look. The property will have one access onto 114th Street. It'll have a sidewalk along 114th Street. You can see the parking spaces, canopy, underground storage tank, tanks that are all required or all part of the project proposal. Staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to the comments and conditions listed in the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval last week as well. I believe I did see the representative from Bolton Mink in on the call. I'll take any questions you may have, but if you have any questions, he's on as well.
Kristi, this is Adam. There's like a comment about a sidewalk not being needed. Can you give me a little bit of your view of where that sidewalk isn't needed at?
Sure. So along the north side, hopefully you can see my cursor there along Meredith Drive. There was a lot of conversation about this sidewalk. It deadens, there isn't pedestrian access planned along the, across the ramp. And I'll pop over here to the aerial because I think it's helpful to see if it goes with me. The pedestrian system, the sidewalk system is actually on the north side of Meredith Drive. The bridge isn't planned for a sidewalk on the south side. You'll see there isn't a sidewalk to go to there east of, or west of the interstate. So we said that they didn't have to put this leg in, but they still do need to put the one leg in along 114th Street. And then hopefully someday we'll have a whole sidewalk system along 114th.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
See, well, there'll be, obviously, there's going to be a light there at, well, where's there going to be a light? I mean, my kids like to ride their bikes along Meredith. And a Casey's is an attractive destination for them. So if they're riding their bike on the north side, will there be a crosswalk signal somewhere to get them to cross safely?
This is Dave McKay.
No, okay.
Right now, if you go back, can you go back to the aerial? Okay, right now, you have approved, and we are installing a traffic signal at 112th and Meredith right here. And this will be basically a stop for north and southbound movements, but through won't have anything. So the thought is that all pedestrian traffic will cross at this location to get onto the trail. And the ramp is set up over here with a traffic signal, but it's not for pedestrian movement across. It would not be a good place for pedestrian movement across here. So the main one will be back at 121st or back at 112th for crossing.
So you could ride to 112th, cross the street safely. Is there sidewalk to get them back to Casey's on the south side?
Yes, this all has sidewalk up to here, and then comes down, and there's sidewalk into Casey's at this location. The real conversation happened was, we originally were requiring them to put sidewalk up to here, and then we thought that would be the access into the store. They ended up providing it over here, so this wasn't really needed. On top of that, this is a big grade drop in here, too, and you couldn't get an ADA sidewalk down there. When we built the Meredith Drive Bridge way back when, we made the decision not to put sidewalk on the south side of Meredith, and we put the 10-foot trail on the north side. And that's kind of, that kind of has set the, the whole thing up for no sidewalk on the south between 114th here over to 121st Street. Not saying that was a great decision, but it was made back when we, when we rebuilt the interstate bridge.
No, that makes sense. I just want to make sure that they're, because that trail is. No, that makes sense. I just wanna make sure that there, um, because that trail is busy. Make sure there's access to, you know, water and air and all that stuff that you get from the gas stations.
Yep.
All right. Anything further? If not, I'll ask for a motion in a second on the item.
I have a motion by Blake, second by Obrath.
All right. Discussion? Please vote.
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Thank you. Item eight point three is the Deer Ridge West Park Improvement Site Plan at one four six five one Sheridan Avenue.
It's coming back to you here, Kristi, just a moment.
Very good. Uh, the next is the Deer Ridge West Park Improvements. Um, the aerial photo on the left, uh, shows the general location, Sheridan Avenue, um, being here along the south side. Hickman Road is a little bit farther south, uh, uh, off the screen, uh, but to give you kind of an idea of where that is. Uh, this is a site plan that proposes construction of an approximately six hundred and fifteen square foot building, uh, to serve visitors in the park. This, um, shelter will be across from the existing playground, uh, where I've got the cursor here. Uh, star is approximate location of the playground. Uh, this park is accessed by sidewalks from, uh, three streets here to the north, here to the east, and then from Sheridan here to, uh, the south. The picture on the right is an excerpt from the site plan, um, the black line kind of outlining the boundary. Uh, the sidewalk is there. They'll bore under the existing sidewalk, uh, for utilities and then construct, um, that shelter in this approximate location. And I'm going to pop over here for just a second. Uh, this is the look, uh, that staff was provided from the Parks Department, uh, for the look of that shelter. So it'll have an open-air component and then it will also have, one half of the, the enclosure will be an ADA restroom. The other half will be the mechanical utility room, um, so that has that open-air component, um, for the shelter. The building is identified in the CIP, the Capital Improvements Program, and, uh, plans for it to still be, uh, constructed, uh, this year. As it is a city project, staff reviewed it, um, but doesn't do the formal recommendation. Uh, we did provide some comments that are fairly typical for a project, um, of this type of site plan. Uh, the Parks and Rec Commission has seen this. Um, I'll turn it over. I think Jan's on the call as well if she wants to add anything else, um, in addition for this project.
Yeah, I'll just share that we did send out letters for this project as well as the next one for Murphy Park that live next to the park, so they're aware of the development. And this was one of the top priorities that came out of the twenty-eighteen Park Recreation Open Space Master Plan was flushable restrooms and open shelters in parks. So this is, uh, being able to address, um, the desires from the, that were designated by the community. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thanks, Jan. Any questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
I have a motion by Blake. Second by Pogie.
Further discussion? Not? Please vote.
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Thank you. Item eight point four is the Murphy Park Improvement Site Plan at thirty-two nineteen sixty-eighth Street.
Give me just a moment, Kristi. You should have privileges.
Murphy Park Site Plan also proposes the construction of an open and share, uh, or, excuse me, open-air shelter combination restroom utility building. This one is slightly larger, uh, so they'll have one, they'll have two more picnic tables is the plan of the Parks Department. Uh, but same sort of layout, the open-air component, uh, the one ADA restroom and then the mechanical room. Um, Murphy Park is accessed, this is Sixty-seventh Street. There's a parking lot area here. There's an existing gazebo that will be demolished, um, and the shelter will go in that general location. You can see that, um, kinda outline of the gazebo here and then where the shelter, uh, location is planned. There will be a new sidewalk cord up from the parking lot. Utilities will be extended from over here on Sixty-seventh Street. Um, this did go to the Parks and Rec Commission back in June. Staff, because this is a city project, we, same thing as what I just mentioned, provided some comments, uh, that are typical of site plans, but not a formal recommendation. Um, and so same sort of, uh, finishes for the shelter here, uh, with that open-air component and then the enclosed part of the building. And I'll turn it back over to Jan, uh, for any additional information.
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Questions?
I'm just happy that my, uh, twelve years after my two-year-old needed the bathroom, I finally get to go.
I'm very excited to see us pursuing these, um, these shelters, uh, with, uh, modern facilities. I, memory serves, I, your project, what's, um, what's up next, Jan?
We're gonna be looking at, um, open shelters, um, and bringing utilities, bringing water to different sites. So, um, open shelters in, in Days Run and Best Land Park for the upcoming year and bringing water to those sites for drinking fountains as well as future restrooms. Obviously, as you can see, the, the cost for bringing restrooms and so forth is significantly more. So we'll be, um, open shelters for some sites and then for the future for the restrooms.
Well, I appreciate whatever we can do to move towards water and sewer in the, in the parks.
I appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion in a second then?
I have a motion by Pogie, second by Obrath.
Discussion? Please vote.
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item nine, regular agenda items versus item nine point one, the final acceptance of North Park Drive Trail Project. And I'll turn it back over to Dave McKay for this item. Dave?
Dave, I'll give you presentation privileges here. Just a moment.
Okay. They work better than last time, so that's good. Um, okay, this is again the North Park, uh, Drive Trail eighty-six to one hundred Street. The, um, project closed out, um, about seventeen thousand over, or five point five percent over what the original contract amount was. And, uh, a lot of that dealt with some landscaping issues that we got into there. As far as the assessment goes, um, here is the assessment plat. So everything on the north side of North Park Drive is what we had in our assessment. And if you look at the total assessable cost, uh, through the whole project, in the preliminary assessment, we're at about a hundred and fifteen thousand. And in the final assessment, due to, uh, pretty good bids that we received, it, it dropped down to ninety thousand. So that was what was spread out with the entire project. Um, so what we had for this project, we had three properties at the east end that already had sidewalks in, four-foot sidewalks. Those were removed and so we couldn't assess those, so they were considered zero. We had three properties that had paid cash at, at plat, so we were holding the money. Uh, we had one property that was bonded at final plat. Um, that was actually what was recently site planned for the Iowa Bankers Association. In the site planning process, that was paid, and so we also have that money at this point in time. So the one, uh, property that's left out there to be assessed is the Macon Realty Property at the west end, the west quarter mile. Um, and that property, uh, is egg use and they have claimed for egg deferral. So, uh, bottom line, all things said, we have one property that will be claiming egg deferral. The rest are all paid for, so, uh, very easy project as far as assessments go. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Dave? Now, we have three items for consideration.
I have a motion by Obrath, second by Blake, to approve Resolution eight, twenty-twenty.
Okay. Discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. A motion for the next item?
Uh, yes, I have a motion by Obrath. And a second by Blake to approve, approve Resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty.
Discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes.
I have a motion by Blake. Second by Obrath to approve Resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty.
Discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item nine point two, uh, is for the purchase of police body cameras. And introduce, this is our police chief, Rob Johansson, chief.
Give me just a moment. I think I may need to unmute him on my side.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? All right. Are you hearing me? I'm sorry.
Yep, we can hear you now.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'll just, uh, give a quick, uh, rundown. Uh, the purchase of these, uh, this is ten body cameras to outfit our investigation division, uh, with body cameras. Our program up until this point has been to supply body cameras for patrolmen. Uh, and, and, uh, we're expanding that now. This is part of what we've looked at as, as, uh, we've had, um, the, uh, discussions about how to improve our police department, how to be more responsive to the public, um, and all those discussions that we've had in our open session. Um, I felt that it was, uh, this, this was scheduled, but in, in a probably next year's budget or even partially and then partially into the next. So, um, I'm moving that forward. Um, it just so happens that we had a timely, uh, asset forfeiture payment from the mine task force of ten thousand dollars that, uh, helped funded this. Um, so, um, there was a, a question posed, uh, by one of the council members about who all wears the body cameras and it, it, it does apply to all of our supervisors. Um, so anytime we're out doing any enforcement action, um, whether that be a captain or a sergeant or a patrolman or, or detective, we will have a body camera for everybody at this point. If there's any other questions, I would, I would, oh, sorry.
Oh, chief, this is Bridget. Um, how do those, um, cameras get turned on? Are they always running?
So, um, they're getting pretty, uh, the, the, the cameras themselves have become very high-tech as they've been developed over the last four or five years. The patrolmen turn on automatically when they get out of the car. There's a, uh, door trigger that triggers the camera to turn on if the officer failed to turn it on. So that triggers when the officer, uh, patrol officer gets out of the car. Um, detectives, obviously, different, completely different situation. So they will be manually turning on those, uh, re, devices. There are, uh, playback features on the camera that if it was failed to be turned on, that we, we can recover, um, some of that footage back. Um, there is, there is not audio with some of that footage, depending on how far back it goes. But we are able to recover some of the video if there was an incident that was a surprise incident, if you will, or, or something happened where the camera was not running or not physically turned on. It is technically recording at all times, but that takes, uh, um, us to go in as a supervisory level into the programming and pull that video up.
What are your, uh, rules for your command staff in terms of them you, turning it on officially, whenever they're working with the public or?
So we, we've, uh, worked our policy to basically state anytime there's enforcement action. So we do have a few exceptions built into the policy. Um, we have other recording equipment, um, so like detectives, we have our interview rooms that are audio and video recorded. So there's no reason to have the body camera on, like, double recording, if you will. Um, there are recording in-car cameras in our car that record the backseat and those things. So officers are allowed to turn their body camera off because it's not optimally catching what's going on in the backseat anyway. We have a specific camera for that. So there are times when they can turn that off. But basically, the, the policy says enforcement action. Uh, we do, we did build into our policy because we're expanding the program that the officers will not have to have them on if they're doing community, uh, service events. So like, if they're walking around National Night Out, the camera's not gonna be on. If they're, uh, teaching a culture of integrity class, they're not gonna have their camera on. So we do build in a few exceptions to that where they don't have to have the camera on. But in most part, anytime there's an incident, um, they have to have the camera on. Anytime there's interaction with the public by patrolmen or detective, they gotta have the camera on.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification and I am glad that the financial, uh, situation allowed us to get these, um, all now, um, rather than staggered. I think this is an important, um, step in transparency for us.
I agree, and, um, there's been some incidents around the country that have been highlighted by, um, uh, tragedy, unfortunately, that have, uh, uh, put a bright light on this, if you will. So it's, it's, it's past due to get done. It's one of the things that we recognized when we were looking at, how can we improve? And, uh, it was one of the top items that I came up with is like, listen, we gotta get, we gotta get cameras on everybody because we just wanna be able to show what we're doing out there and that we're doing the right thing. And if we, and if we misstep, that we have that there as well and we can take corrective action. All right. Thanks, chief. Any further questions or discussion? I'll ask for a motion in a second.
I have a motion by Obrath, second by Carberry Montgomery.
Further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
That item passes, thank you. Item nine point three is a swim lessons agreement with the Goldfish Swim School. And to introduce this is our Parks and Recreation Director, Jan Hurkey. Jan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the last city council meeting, we um you had the discussion regards to the future of the pool. And at that meeting, um you as a council uh recommended to postpone the a decision um to get further input and also uh encouraged and supported staff to pursue partnership ships with other entities that provide aquatic services uh in the metro area. Uh, Goldfish Swim School um is located immediately across the street from City Hall here. We had had previous discussions with them um before the last council meeting and finalized uh an agreement that's before you tonight to provide swim lesson opportunities for residents in Urbandale at a discounted rate. And in an, in a summary, essentially currently if a resident came into the Goldfish Swim School, the cost for a monthly membership um would ninety dollars. Uh, Goldfish is, is willing to provide us that rate. Residents, they can prove that they are an Urbandale residence to have that rate at eighty dollars per month. In addition, currently or before our discussions, they had not offered the week long classes similar to what we had done at the, the Urbandale Pool. They're willing to provide a jumpstart clinic is what they call it. So a week long class of uh four classes um that residents can sign up uh for that. Currently, those co- the cost for that is a hundred and twenty dollars. They are willing to offer that to Urbandale residents for a hundred dollars. In addition, if somebody signs up um for a gold, for any, for a Goldfish uh monthly membership, there is a twenty five dollar uh membership or registration fee. That is max, a maximum of forty five dollars for a family. They are willing to um have that max at twenty five dollars per family. And after discussion, they are willing to, and it's one of the things that we're proposing tonight, is that um the city considers subsidizing that. And they are willing to work with us instead of the twenty five dollars um for that's uh subsidy right away is the city would pay or be invoice fifteen dollars of that. And if a family or if a, a uh, a student in that uh swim lesson belonged or continued for over six months, then the city would uh pay the remaining balance. So it's kind of an incentive for the um Goldfish Swim School as well as for the city of Urbandale to continue to encourage um our residents to not just take one class, but to continue to build on, on their swim skills and that partnership. So that is what is before you tonight. Again, um Goldfish um has provided some reduced rates from what they typically do. And also um for the uh, the week long class as well as the month long class. And staff is uh recommending the subsidy for the, the uh, the membership for that twenty five. Uh, happy to answer any questions. Again, we do have as part of your council packet is an agreement that has been reviewed by the city attorney and has been approved and in agreement with the Goldfish. Uh, I believe on WebEx and connected tonight are Brian Aaron, who is one of the co owners of Goldfish Swim School, as well as Ann O'Rear, who is the general manager here in Urbandale. So if you had any questions for them as well, I believe they are online.
This is Ron. I don't, I don't have any questions, but I do want to compliment Jan and her staff for moving so quickly. Uh, so two weeks is not very long, and I think your staff did a really nice job of getting an agreement, which helps an Urbandale business and also hopes our, uh, helps our citizens. So, thank you.
Well, I certainly want to acknowledge John Conier and Molly Willhite have been tremendously helpful in, in this move forward too. Thank you, Ron.
Jan, this is Bridget. How does um, so the jumpstart, which would be like you would get cer- you would do a week uh session in a whole, in a week, right?
Correct.
You know, level one or however their, their system is. So that price of a hundred dollars, how does that compare uh to what? What would you pay at our pool?
Yep.
Session, level one or level A or Goldfish, whatever they're called.
Yep, absolutely. Our, um, I just put those numbers together, um thinking this might be a question. The Urbandale Pool provided swim lessons um for fifty dollars, and it was for eight sessions. So um four thirty minute classes, so it was for four hours. Um, the, so Goldfish for theirs would be for four classes. So they work with their clients and it's a, once a week, and they work the, the um, the client can pick the day and the time that works best for them, and they have that date and time then locked in for four weeks. Or if you happen to have a month that has five weeks in it, that's your bonus and, and you get the extra week with that. So that is the cost where we had um mentioned that's the eighty dollars. So um certainly it's a private business, and we had talked with them as well um in regards to their, their just covered cost um with some of these um offerings that they're providing. And certainly as we realize in our discussions, we subdi- subsidize our, our offerings pretty significantly. So I, I don't know if that answered your question or not, or some of those cost differences uh in regards to um for Goldfish and what they're offering.
Uh, yeah, I think it does. Um, since we're talking, um, do you have uh any other uh preview of other things that you have up your sleeve for next uh time? Or do you think this is uh kind of the option that we're going with?
No, we're certainly hoping that we have a number of options. Actually, we have a meeting tomorrow with the um CEO or vice president of YMCA and the um aquatic directors from uh the Ario YMCA. So we will be having a discussion with them. There was some vacation time last week by some of the um representatives with YMCA. So we will be having meetings with them tomorrow um to talk about what opportunities might be available for the YMCA. Um, had some discussions with Urbandale Golf and Country Club that looked optimistic. Some of the challenges are the exact same things that we had when we operated is finding adequate staff. So uh we did provide that opportunity to all of our staff um to not only that the Goldfish Swim School encouraged uh and would make available uh employment opportunities for our staff, as well as Urbandale Golf and Country Club encouraged them to uh contact them as well. Certainly, if you get into the middle of July, many of um those young adults have pursued other um employment opportunities. But the YMCA, um, they're very interested in working with us, so we're very um excited for that meeting tomorrow. And uh certainly as we talked about, I think for Clive, that is a twenty twenty one opportunity, but we're pretty optimistic with that as well. So um we'll continue to, to flush those out, as they say, and, and perhaps by the, the following meeting that we have at the end of July, we might have some more um updates for you. The reason we, we didn't want to wait to have all of them together is certainly the sooner we can get these agreements down, the sooner our residents can take advantage of it and get swim lessons in the summer.
Well, I'm very pleased with this agreement. Um, a lot of the emails I've been receiving are related to water aerobics. Is that something that you're going to be talking to the why about?
Yes, that uh the YMCA water aerobics, lap swim and swim lessons. Um, those are three kind of the core programs, the, the main programs that were uh priority programs at the Urbandale Pool. So we'll certainly be talking with them about all three of those options and opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
All right. Good discussion. Any other comments? If not, we have, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
The motion by Obrak. Second by Pogi to approve resolution one forty eight twenty twenty.
Discussion, please vote.
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
That passes, thank you.
Bob, if I may share on the note regarding aquatics, I think you all um have been communicating with and know that we did get the uh survey out um and on social media, the website, and we had over four hundred responses already. So it is getting some good feedback, and, and we'll be ready to present that at the next council meeting and share that information with you.
All right, thank you, Jan. Uh, and I noted too, Jane just noted too, and I just been watching on my phone too. There is uh some severe weather in the area, so just be weather aware right now. I think it's mostly north of uh the, the uh Urbandale area. But uh if you can kind of monitor that, and while I'm trying to monitor it as well, if we see it coming, we may have to uh ask people to take safety at this point. But we are uh to the end of our regular agenda. We do have one closed session item for item ten, and I'd ask for a motion in a second to enter into that closed session.
The motion by Pogi. And second by Carberry Montgomery.
Discussion, please vote.
Yes, and the sirens have just gone off.
Yeah, I'm looking, Dave. I think from what I can tell, it's, what they're saying, it's uh it's still in the Johnston area, but uh
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the other option is if people want to, we can adjourn this, the meeting and then handle a closed session later. This is uh wha- what are people's options? I don't want to put people at risk. So if you'd rather take some safety at this point, we can adjourn the meeting.
Uh, I'm okay with moving forward with the option of bailing if we have to.
Yeah, uh, maybe I'll ask uh
I agree with that, and we have the TV on here, and it's showing that it is kind of going a little north of Urbandale.
All right, so everybody just be weather aware. I'll ask uh, I'll ask our staff to kind of watch it too, and, and uh I'll watch from my phone. So uh, I'm sorry, did we, we've had that vote on that one? I apologize, I was
Yes, it was all in favor.
Okay, so the council members then need to, uh, I'd ask you to leave this uh WebEx session and join the link that Carla had sent you for the closed session.
And this, this link will remain live, so if anyone would like to wait for their live, for the open session to resume, you can just stay on the line here.
Okay. So the council members can um leave this now and enter the other one. Thank you.
Nicole, um, is there any way that you could text me the link to the closed session? With all of these devices, I don't have the, my computer does not have my city email on it.
Yes, I will copy that over and send it to you here shortly.
So if I have it in a text, I can open it. So do I X out of this one?
Yes, you can go ahead and leave this WebEx session, and I'll send you the new meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, it's definitely picking up here. I don't know, trying to watch, because I was watching on my phone. And just watching this slide through town, I know this looks jumbled to you sometimes at home when we show the Doppler winds, but what I'm watching is these bright colors move through the area. It looks like the winds are picking up of it on the west side of town. It is along this area of the bright reds where the strongest winds are right now. And just based on the reports I'm getting, those winds probably around 60 miles an hour and reports of the trees down.
We can do that.
Yeah.
You got something.
Wow, this is really cool.
I gotta look, he's gotta be holding something for two hours.
We had those strong winds pushing on through, but now the strongest winds, there's strong winds moving through downtown, but it looks like the strongest winds are now pitching winds or heights towards some wind gusts there of 60 and then headed over towards west Mixmasters as those slide on through. So there are thunderstorm warning in effect just joined us until eight, eight-five. If you just got off of your evening. Made it home safely with those storms that moved on through and the very strong winds that kicked on into the area. Again, the rain has been tremendous, anchoring up and through Ainge towards two inches of rain. Big creek, I keep checking this, ah, the front just, the winds are shifting to the north. The dew point's still high though. It's gonna take some time for that to drop.
Just checking in, Mayor, can you hear me in here?
I can.
Excellent, thank you.
I think we're just waiting on David. Give him a second. Let me text him. Well, I texted him, I didn't hear from him. Um, let's wrap up the meeting, guys. We are back into session for the Tuesday, July 14, 2020 meeting, and we're up to item 11, mayor and council items. Matt, I'll turn it to you first, I guess.
Okay, uh, I guess we had our meeting with the Fourth of July yesterday where we reviewed how things went overall. I think we Overall, I think we were putting on a fairly good fireworks show. We had, uh, and everything with fundraising, we only had a net loss of about two thousand dollars. Um, so which, considering, you know, how much money went in, I think that's pretty good. Um, from what we can tell, we didn't have much of any, um, issues from our perspective when it came to the so quasi-celebration we had. And I can say that we're, they're already planning for next year. Again, I will have to step off the committee due to me not being here and being in Kosovo. But, um, they, uh, they're already preparing for as it is, and, uh, secondly, I look forward to further steps on the, um, from follow-up from our forum, and I'm trying to keep it quick, that's it, bye.
Thanks, thank you, Matt. Uh, Ron.
Uh, I don't have anything to report.
All right. Bridgette.
Uh, just what Matt said, I'm anxious to, uh, ball-rolling, uh, from our forum, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and, um, I think we learned a lot, learned a lot of things we can do better, um, even in just setting up the forum. So had a nice chat with the mayor this afternoon, but, um, I think it needs to be a top priority for us to, um, keep moving forward on this issue.
All right, thanks, Bridgette. Uh, Adam.
Yeah, just, uh, obviously a storm that just rolled through kinda was freaky, but hopefully everybody is safe from it, and that's about all I have.
All right, thanks. Um, I will say, uh, you know, we had, uh, Metro Advisory Council today, and, uh, this did come up, uh, this, uh, the, the, Des Moines presented its anti-profiling ordinance, we walked through that, and we had a good discussion from the region, and as far as where other cities are on that. So I would have to say, I think we are, uh, you know, not to say that we don't need to keep working on, we obviously do, but I think we are, uh, as far ahead or farther ahead than a lot of the cities, uh, in the region. But, uh, that doesn't mean we s- we, uh, don't, that we stop, or, and so we'll keep, we'll keep moving forward. It's just, I think, uh, after the session, when COVID hit, uh, it's, uh, it just kinda set us back again, and we're just trying to pivot from both ways. I'd like to see ideally, I mean, I think maybe two things we still need to do, one, we talked about having a forum, I'd like to have you look at your calendars, and, and with Curtis on here too, we'll probably send something out, but I, I had talked to AJ before he left. But I'm thinking we need to probably have a half-day, uh, for a, for an internal work session, and maybe, uh, you know, maybe look to August one, uh, or August eighth, or someplace around there on a Saturday morning, have a, have a Saturday morning work session. Uh, so, um, I'll have Curtis follow up with all of you on that, uh, so we can get something on the calendar. And then also set up a task force, uh, that to look at some things, uh, I know West Des Moines has done something similar, I have some thoughts on that, uh, as well. And I'm gonna pursue some, some options for some folks that can serve on that, so we will keep, uh, we will keep the discussion going. What else I wanted to? I'm still working also on the Polk County, uh, the COVID disaster recovery task force, that's moving along. Uh, again, I think the, a lot of the discussion was, you know, if we're seeing another wave here, uh, or a continuation of the first wave, what, how this is gonna affect, uh, our operations, how this is gonna affect, uh, operations in general, so we need to keep a very close tab on that. We've had, uh, some discussions internally, I, I've had with Curtis this week, as far as, you know, what we may need to modify, uh, yet moving forward. So, you know, we're, we're gonna keep a very close tab on that, and, um, and see what we need to do so we keep folks safe. And so I think, I think, I'm glad we, uh, shut things down when we did. Uh, I think you saw, uh, you know, the Clive and, and some other cities responded in kind, uh, after we did that. So, uh, again, we're, we're gonna keep this in place at least through the end of July, and then we'll evaluate and, and see where we are. But we're gonna do it carefully, and we're gonna do it prudently, so.
Bob, was there any discussion at your MAC meeting, um, about, um, a mask, or a county-wide mask ordinance, or discussion of what Des Moines is doing?
No, uh, we didn't, we didn't talk about that, uh, so, uh, I, I think we'll have a discussion about that, actually tomorrow, I'll have a government subcommittee of the COVID task force. So I think we're gonna probably have a discussion there, and I wanna, Frank wasn't on the, at, at the MAC, MAC meeting today, so, um, and we, so we didn't really bring it up, there's really nobody from Des Moines, uh, from the policy standpoint that could talk about that, so we didn't bring that up and talk about it. But I'll bring that up, um, tomorrow during my COVID, uh, government subcommittee meeting.
I know there are legal obstacles, but, um, you know, and I don't know that Urbandale needs to be leading the way. But, uh, you know, I would definitely support, uh, Polk County, uh, leading the way, um, or, you know, having a discussion.
Well, yeah, I mean, I had, so this, this task force is set up of an overall committee, and then the government subcommittee. So I had the overall committee meeting on Monday afternoon, and that did come up at that meeting. Uh, and, and so there was discussion about, you know, a, a PR campaign, a unified PR campaign among the, um, metropolitan, uh, governments to, to very much encourage that. Uh, so I think we're gonna, you're gonna at least at a minimum see, uh, a PR blitz, um, and so we'll, we'll have some further discussion on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you could, uh, keep us up to date, maybe before the next meeting on the outcome of those meetings, I would appreciate it.
I will certainly do so. I'll certainly do so. All right, uh, anything else for the good of the order? Yeah, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by all rights.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, stay safe.
Thanks.
Good night.